And two completely.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riden?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul?
Here.
City manager Rick Holden?
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith?
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. I do not see pastor call. Is he here? No? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and do the invocation and then we will have the pledge led by Commissioner Robinson. If everybody will stand.
Oh, Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you, Lord, for this time that we can come together to do the business of the city, Lord. We pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance. We pray for open hearts, Lord, and ears to hear. Lord, we pray that as we discuss our city, Lord, that you would just be in the midst of that, Lord. We pray over this city. I pray over each and every citizen, Lord. I pray you would just be with them, Lord, protect them, guide them. And, Lord, our thoughts and our prayers tonight are also with the Los Cruces Police Department, Lord. At the loss of their officer, Lord, I pray that you would just give that city a calm, Lord, be with the leaders of that city, Lord, and protect our officers, Lord. Always, always, always protect our officers and all of our first responders. And we ask you, Lord, to just lead us, guide us, and direct us in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. We had a presentation. We're pulling that off and I maybe at a later date, okay? And so, yes, okay. And, oh, here it is. Okay, this really helps. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to public comment. I do have two people signed up. I believe Bobby Stone has an item on the agenda. So if you don't mind, I'll just wait until we get to that item. Is that okay? Okay. And with that, we have John Davis.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. I wanted to share some good news. The animal control people came by my house. I wasn't home. That's what I was sorry about. And they brought me an injured pigeon. And I thought that was so cool. I wish I'd been home to take the pigeon, but I wasn't and didn't hear about it until later. I'm back, and everybody knows pretty much why I'm here. I sent Rachel an email, being a little mystified as to why everybody chose at the last meeting to take no action. Nobody articulated any reason as to why. And that's okay. That's all right. I walked here tonight on an injured foot that's busted open and bleeding, and I'm diabetic, and it's cold and all. Anyway, I hope that shows my resolve. I'm not going away. I have reasons for pursuing this in spite of the fact that you folks kindly said nobody was going to bother me feeding pigeons. I appreciate that. I do have reasons for pursuing this, however, and I would be happy to share those, but I was thinking maybe we could do it over coffee and donuts, my treat. UU F O C, I got a key to the place, and I'll be happy to bring the donuts. Rick, you can come too if you like. I'll, you know, watch how many donuts you consume. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead, because it is cold outside, I'm going to go ahead and duck out now. But I'll be back for the meeting on the 23rd and then also March 12th. And after that, I'm not sure, I have to be up early the next morning to go in with 100% Otero to Chaparral for a Day of Hope. So you guys will get an email from me, and please feel free to email me with whatever date and time works out best for you, because, like I say, I have a key, and I'll bring the donuts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, members of the commission, nothing new to report from my Rick's Ramblings report to you over the weekend. I will tell you, though, that the staff has begun our budget hearings this week, and so when we're a little difficult to reach or we might seem a little overly frustrated, we're looking at numbers and dealing with numbers in preparation for a budget that we'll be bringing to you later this spring, but let you know that your staff is diligently working on the 24-25 budget, and so you can look forward to a very productive budget year as we move forward. With that, I have nothing else new to add. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission, and if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and start. We do have some guests here tonight. First of all, I am so sorry. I should have done this earlier. I would like to welcome Colonel Gonzalez and his wife to our city commission meeting. If you have not met him and her, you're missing out, because they are a treat, for sure. And we get to talk about California. I know not everybody likes California, but it is fun to talk to somebody when I say something and they say, "Oh, yeah, I know where that's at." So I'm like, "Oh, good. I don't feel so bad." So very, very nice to see you tonight. Thank you for coming. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I've got a quick presentation and some announcements to tell everybody. Okay, okay, perfect. You've got some time. Okay, so for those of you who have not heard, the city of Alamogordo and Holloman Air Force Base have been awarded the 2023 Altus Award. What is the Altus Award? Well, it's kind of big. It's kind of a big deal. We've been trying to get this for a while. It is nationwide recognition, and it just, it is an award that is presented to the city that has shown exceptional support for their air education and training command base. I always twist that one. So for those of you who don't know about Holloman, we are a training base, and we have a really great relationship in our city with our community partners at Holloman. Of course, we recognize that they're a large part of our city. They're a large part of our economy, and we are honored to be partnering with them. And, you know, I can't say enough about it. I mean, I've said this before. My own son joined the Air Force because of Holloman and the great support that he saw growing up, and so, and then was stationed here and decided that wasn't a good idea either, but, you know, he grew up here, right? But we can't say enough about our community partners. We are thrilled. And this award is big for our community. I mean, we're up against cities like San Angelo, Texas, and cities in Florida and Mississippi and all over the country. And I was sort of doing a little research last night, and, you know, this is a first for us, and we're excited about it, because I believe, as I'm sure all of you do, that we have a phenomenal community. And we don't get enough recognition for that. We're a little old Alamogordo, New Mexico, down here in the southeast part of New Mexico. You know, we're not as big, of course, as a lot of communities, and we, you know, economically speaking, sometimes it's a challenge, right? But as small as we are, we're pretty mighty when it comes to our business community and our civic communities and everybody just working together. And there's nothing that makes me prouder than serving in a community that cares so much about its people, and we've seen that over and over again. So with that, if you are interested in this after the meeting, if you don't mind, I'm just going to leave this for a few minutes. But this is what has to be done in order to do this. We've been, I say "we," I will introduce the real person behind all this in just a minute, but this is what has to be submitted every year. I mean, this is a pretty big package, and they have to get letters from our business community and our civic organizations and our government organizations. I know I wrote a letter of support. Jared Perry is here from the Center of Commerce. Of course, the Center of Commerce was a big part of this. And so this is a really big deal, and we were selected. It is a panel of, was it six? Six retired generals, three and four-star generals, and we were unanimously selected this year as the Altus Award winner. So it is a really big deal and great for our community. It gives us, like I said, that nationwide recognition, and we need that. We need to be known for the good things that we do, because we do a lot. But Shelley, I'm going to have you come up for a moment. She does not know I'm doing this, but I'm going to do this, because for, gosh, three years now, Shelley, this is Shelley Bailey. She's with Public Affairs.
I'm in Public Affairs, Community Engagement or Community Relations.
Yep.
She's a community relations superstar.
She is extraordinary, right?
That's right.
Yeah, and Shelley works a lot, of course, in town and then on base, and she does a little bit of everything, and sometimes I can just picture the pressure that's on her, because it could be something as like, "Shelley, we haven't got her base passage yet," or "Shelley, can you find this out?" or "Shelley, can you do this?" And I can't even imagine the 10,000 directions she's pulling in. But the one thing that we've learned about Shelley is that she has this really competitive spirit, and I understand that, because I'm very competitive. It's funny, I didn't used to be, and then I realized how cool it is when you win, and so now I'm a very competitive person. Yeah, yeah, no, that feels pretty good. And so Shelley has got this competitive spirit about her, and so she's been working on this for three years, three years in a row. And she just said to me outside, she goes, "I guess third time's a charm." I said, "Yeah, I guess it is." And so last year, we were runner-up.
Yes.
Not that we knew that until recently, but we were runner-up. And this year, we won this coveted award, and, you know, we did the easy stuff, right? We wrote letters and that kind of stuff, but Shelley put this whole thing together. And so we felt like you deserved something special for that, and we appreciate it. We want you to know that we appreciate it. We appreciate all your hard work. We appreciate your competitive spirit. Thank you very much. And with that, I do have a mayor's commendation. The city of Alamogordo, New Mexico, awards to Shelley Bailey in recognition of your commitment to the betterment of our community, your contribution to ensuring the continuation of a strong partnership between our civilian and military communities, and your determination to bring national attention to those invaluable relationships make you especially deserving of this distinct honor. And it is dated today, and that is for you, and you can, I don't know, frame it, because, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. But anyway, there you go, and thank you. Thank you.
This was 192 pages. Heaven help us. It can only be three inches, so.
Yeah, like literally, I was reading it. It literally said it cannot be more than three inches. I'm going to leave this up here if anybody wants to take a look at it after the meeting. Thank you again, Shelley. We really appreciate it. Okay, does anybody else have anything they would like to add under Commissioner's comments?
I just actually have a question as far as an explanation. When we condemn a property, what is the process for the property owner to clean up their property?
Josh, would you like to address that?
Bible state law and city ordinance, they have 10 days to commence demolition. I take that as, and I tell property owners, that if you have called a contractor to obtain a quote, that is commencing demolition, which I've had done. After that 10 days is up, per code, they have two years to complete demo or rehab.
Okay. And at what point do we fence off the property?
At the point where it becomes a danger to occupants or anybody who could get inside. So, for instance, one of the recent structure fires over on Incredible, that is still fenced, because it is a danger. If anybody gets in it, it could collapse at any moment, and since we've condemned it, I don't want any liability on the city.
And that's Ms. Gonzalez's, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I had spoken to her this morning, and she just had some questions as far as the permit processing and...
Wish we both learned something new on that one.
Right, apparently she didn't need a permit to condemn it or to demo it, so.
Because it's a manufactured home.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say congratulations to Shelley Bailey. I had watched her get the book ready for this award, and I saw it back in July of this past year, and she's been working on it, I know it's three years, but she was really intent on getting that together. I'm saying that because I think she is amazing, and she supports everything that goes on in the city practically. So thank you again.
Anybody else? Okay, I did go to Santa Fe, and actually Rachel and I attended the municipal day. It was interesting, for sure, and learned some things. Of course, this is a short session, and so not a lot is going to get done up there that I've been looking at, anyway. I'm not saying things didn't get, I'm not saying things didn't get done, but it was a short session, but I did have an opportunity to do that. And, yeah, there was a couple of other things I was going to mention, but we're just going to go ahead and leave it at that. And with that, if nobody has anything else, okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I am going to be pulling item 14 from the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to pull?
Mayor, are you going to be pulling that, removing it completely?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm going to be removing it completely. I'm sorry, yes.
I'd like to pull item 10.
Item, I'm sorry?
10.
10? Okay. Commissioner Riden is pulling item 10. Anything else? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 14 and pulling item 10 for discussion?
So moved.
Was that, I'm sorry. A motion from Commissioner Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Riden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to items pulled from the consent agenda. Item 10, and Commissioner Riden, you had some questions?
Looked like when I drove by that one, somebody was working on it. There was a trailer and a construction company truck backed in there. Do we know if they're trying to fix it or...
No, that actually belongs across the street to a contractor that lives across the street that does fencing and gates.
Okay, so, and then is the property owner local or...
He's deceased.
He's deceased?
Yes. And no, there's no paperwork in probate or district court for next of kin.
Wow. Okay. Well, all right, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, do I have a motion to approve item 10?
Got one more question on that. What are our plans with that, to rehabilitate or...
That is a decision that the city manager and Director Nunley and I will have to have on that particular building for what's going to happen with that going forward, because there is no property owner for that.
Okay. That's interesting. Okay.
Is that it?
It's just kind of odd that nobody claims that house, and it's not too far gone. I mean, when I drove by it, it doesn't look too far gone. I mean, there's a hole in the roof back in the back. It looks like an addition or something, but if it gets torn down, it's just going to be a vacant lot forever in that neighborhood, so.
You've tried to contact the owner and you said...
He's deceased.
Albuquerque, didn't it?
Yes, and that's actually the address for a nursing home.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
No children, no nothing, huh?
No, nobody's come forward. That is next of kin to him.
So who's paying the property taxes on it?
I don't know who's paying those property taxes. Like I said, I looked at the county assessor's website for the name, and then I checked probate and district court, and there was nothing filed, neither, for a next of kin.
Okay.
Right.
So did it actually say when the property, last property taxes were paid?
I didn't look that close to answer that question. That's something I just didn't look at at this particular time, on this one.
Did you have a property card in the packet?
Should be, yes.
Let me find it real quick.
It should be attached to the resolution. Should be number exhibit one.
Sorry, computer's kind of slow.
Doesn't say if it's paid or not?
It doesn't say it on it.
It just says the estimated value?
Yeah, it doesn't say whether it's been paid. Is it that Mr. Duran that's the actual owner or Mr. Stouffer?
Mr. Stouffer.
Stouffer. Who's that Frank Duran?
That I don't know. I have had no contact, I've had no luck finding anybody for this property.
Says in care of name is Frank Duran. Say nothing.
Any more questions or... Anyone? No?
Kind of torn on that one. I guess we got to do what we got to do, huh?
I'll make a motion. I've got another question.
What are our options on that? If we do go ahead and pass this resolution, I mean, can we go in and rehab it?
That's probably not something that we would do based on our current processes, certainly, because we don't have any ownership of it.
Could we sell it on the courthouse steps as is?
That might be possible. I have to, after we have to go through a foreclosure process before we could do that.
Rather than demolishing it, be something we could lean and foreclose, and since there is no owner, essentially?
We would have to, like, we would have to place a lien on the property. I mean, right now, it's about three years. I'm still working on trying to get caught up on all those. I finally got the courts to start signing over some of the foreclosure stuff, so my office, we're working on getting those, but we would then have to foreclose, like, you know, foreclose on the lien, and then even after we get awarded that foreclosure, we have to wait a year before we can sell it. So it would be a few years.
I think it's a prime opportunity for the private sector to step up. If somebody has an interest, go track down that other person. The property taxes were paid current as of December 10th, 2023. And so somebody's paying those taxes. So if somebody out there wants to go track down that person and find out if they have any rights or interest in the property, it can get handled that way. If not, it's going to sit vacant for years.
Okay, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve item 10.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Riden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to new business, item 15, Presentation and Discussion on Setback Requirements and Subdivision Ordinance and City Manager. Rick Holden.
Members of the commission, when I first got here, I actually was invited to a meeting, and I went to that meeting. It was a couple of months before I ever officially started, actually, and happened to meet in a brand-new home being constructed here in Alamogordo, and I think Commissioner Paul was there, and I know Jared Perry was there, and we had some staff members, and I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Jewell at that time, who's going to speak to you momentarily. And we had some discussions about setbacks and some of the things that cities do that govern how developers locate their properties, houses on those properties. And so there was a good, lively discussion, I'll say, that day, and we decided, and we did offer to Mr. Jewell, that we would certainly be happy to facilitate an opportunity for him to visit with you all individually in an open meeting, in a workshop format. So with that, Kevin and I sat down in my office, and we... So with that, Kevin and I sat down in my office, and we talked about a number of issues that affect the development community, as well as those things that we have as our responsibility from the city to regulate in terms of our zoning and our setbacks and building codes and various things. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Jewell to have the mic here, and he will give you a presentation to be available to answer questions that you might have. And hopefully, if any direction comes from the commission at us, the staff, we will take that and, and go from there with it. So with that, Mr. Jewell, please.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. So I guess the question of the hour is, first, congratulations to all the new commissioners. And then second would be, you know, why is this guy back up here again talking about setback ordinances? So I know with Mr. Ramirez, I see that you have your code book, we will not need that at all today. So here's where it gets different, and what I'm going to accomplish or try to accomplish with you guys is I'm going to paint a picture of what Alamogordo currently looks like on affordability of housing. Because I took a lot of Mrs. McDonald's feedback on affordable means a lot of things to a lot of different people, okay? So completely accept that. A term we're starting to use is attainable, because we can use attainable, because that has a larger swath of information. And then we looked at what our primary customer is in Alamogordo, which is the military, okay? I was privileged enough to serve 10 years in the Army. I spent my time on the special forces side, spent my time as a commander out of the 10 years. And affordability of housing was one of the first things that you would deal with when people came into town, right? And I'm looking over here because Hallman Air Force Base, we have a lot of backlog on our housing, okay? So if we go to the next slide, literally all I'm going to do today is I'm going to highlight what is currently available for Alamogordo. And, do I have a clicker? Yeah, clicker. I'm over here like, who's going to click my slides? Okay. So what you see up here is Mesa Village. Randy Raybin owns it. He is currently developing the next phases, which is approximately 84 lots. All the lot sizes are 70 feet wide by 120 feet deep. Typical average cost of finished raw land right now is roughly $8.25 to $8.50. That's, that's on a market rate. That's what gets sold on the market value. That means up here, based off those costs, the introductory price range for Mesa Village is roughly in that $400,000 range, okay? That excludes literally about 95% of the people in Alamogordo who can afford to buy that home. And even on the, the military side, you're talking O5 and above roughly off the new BAH rates. That 84 lots is going to take roughly seven and a half to eight years for us to build out with Randy Raybin on doing one home a month. So we have that upper-end price range to offer with Christus Health coming in, the covenants that are out there, we have that market opportunity, okay? If we go to the next slide, what we'll show you here is Bella Vista. Bella Vista is located on the northern side of town. It's just south of that North Florida street, kind of over there in that Lowe's, Home Depot, the Wood Streets area. There's a new phase of Bella Vista that's being developed right now. That's developed by Burt Beach and Mike Drunzer, correct, on that? Those are going to be roughly around 26 lots. They'll probably be good for another two years. Again, the lot sizes there, that's roughly a $70,000 lot cost. Mesa Village is, again, around a $70,000 lot cost. So we have no opportunity to, from just a land size standpoint, be able to provide homes at a price point that gets people out of the rental market, provides housing ability for people on base, to move off of base and provide housing. Again, we have a different price range here. We're starting in the mid 300s. This is our pricing, I understand that, that's exclusive to us. Other builders can be in different price ranges. The fact of the matter is the lot cost, the land cost is going to be the same to no matter who builds on that land. So we have a little bit of a lower price point to provide to different people in the community. When we talk about Quail Hollow, that's owned again by Mike Drunzer. That's where prior commissioner Dusty Wright lived. It's over also by where the last fire on the trailer houses were, yeah. So that's the area that we're talking about. So that's over there on Acateo off of Panorama. That price point, it starts in the, in the, just above 300,000, and we can get into the low 400,000s, depending on what homes are there. Again, that lot cost is roughly going to be around $55,000 to $60,000. That's just the land cost. What we don't have in Alamogordo at all is any lot pricing that dramatically helps us reduce the price of the home. When we look at the lot size, what we're providing here is we, we have, working on the plat of a project we call Somerset. What we can't do with Somerset right now is move forward on, on the setback requirements. And I'm not even talking two stories. We'll completely concede the seven and a half feet, no issues there. So I want to show you the differences in the lot costs of what we can achieve. What we're proposing is if we just match, not even go above and beyond anything else of what our Las Cruces brethren provide, we can match pricing in there where we're getting ready to start homes in the high 100,000s on a brand-new home, 191. That is a astronomically low price for a brand-new home with a one-year warranty, a two-year major mechanical, five-year parts and labor, and a 10-year structural warranty. It all comes with that. What we're proposing in Alamogordo is we've developed a paired home product that will fit on even smaller lots. So think that duplex style, and that's where the firewalls and stuff come in on those two-story homes. We'll keep the seven and a half feet. We can work around that, so no issues, no issues on the fire setbacks. So we're not even talking adjusting the ordinances on the fireside, it's just the lot sizes. Currently in Alamogordo, right now, the minimum lot size that we can go to is 6,000 square feet. In Las Cruces, we can go all the way to 3,500 square feet. So you're talking roughly, what, 1,500 square foot difference on lot sizes. When you times that up, just on land alone, you're talking anywhere from $12,000 to $13,000 on just raw land development of where we're starting at on the price point. What we've worked to in showing up here is a product mix that is a 40-foot wide by 100 foot deep. That's within that 4,000 range of what Las Cruces, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Rio Rancho, Burnalee, all those areas are doing. What that allows us to do on a single-family detached, this wouldn't be a paired product, we could, we estimate that we can get that sales price into around the $256,000 range, which brings in your mid-level enlisted into that price point from the BAH. Then we went one step further. We looked at our paired home product. If we had a 35 by 100 lot size, which matched the 3,500 square feet that's in Las Cruces, we have confidently, because we're releasing sales prices at this point in Las Cruces right now, we can release the homes at a sales price of $215,000 for a brand-new home that's anywhere from 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. That starts to get into your E3, E4 range with dependents. That's the key, because I'm not sure if E3s are allowed off base or not. Depends. Right. Okay. So then, if you look at the 27 by 100, right, 2,700 square feet home on a paired home product, we think that we can get close to being around $150,000 on the sales price.
That's, that's the lot size, not the home, right?
That's the lot size.
Yeah, okay.
So that product would be roughly around 1,150 square feet with a single-car garage, paired with a two-car garage. So what you're looking at is we would be taking a 27-foot wide lot, paired with a 35-foot wide lot. That gives us a, if something were to go wrong and we, and the product wasn't moving, we wouldn't want Alamogordo to get stuck with these odd-shaped sizes. So 27 and 35 lets you build a home on there with a lot size of 62 feet wide, if that makes sense. You'd essentially, at that point, do ordinance change or, or small variance to create it towards one lot? You could put a single-family home on a 62-foot wide lot. It matches up with what is in the norm of Alamogordo. But on that 27 by 100 square foot lot, the product that we could put on there, I'm fortunate enough to own a mortgage company now, starting in January, so I had our loan officer run real-life scenarios against that product, using the base as our mindset. We can get a price point with somebody in the 500 credit score, which is difficult to qualify somebody in the 500 credit score. That monthly payment's going to roughly be $1,200 a month for home ownership. If you look at rental markets right now, and you look at apartment complexes right now, it would be hard for you to find a three-bedroom, two-bath that wasn't $1,400, $1,500, $1,600. What I'm trying to get people to see, going away from the seven and a half feet, is if we make changes on our land side from an ordinance standpoint, we put ourselves in a position to be able to dramatically reduce sales prices of the homes, which greatly increases our ability to attack affordability from a base standpoint and from a lower economical standpoint. Here's some of the challenges. What we will commit to, and to show my commitment behind it, is I'm already working with Randy Raybin on an area of land that he's bought that he's wanting to put a fourplex on. That's an inner-city project. We are bidding that project right now. Knowing our pricing, closing 250 homes a year, it's going to be tough for anybody to touch our pricing. We're going to bid to build that fourplex in inner-city downtown. On the projects where we're pulling down dilapidated buildings, some of those lot sizes are 30 feet by 70 feet wide, they're tiny. We've developed a product that is 650 square feet, which if you drive down Panorama and some of these, those are small homes. We can build on those lots. We can't build on those lots with the way that the ordinances are right now. We have no shot. The home won't fit on it and be able to still provide like a livable space. So what I would commit to is we will commit to building on these inner-city lots when someone wants to purchase them, and not just in our own developments. That's the difference that I'm trying to, I'm very passionate about bringing affordability into Alamogordo. Where I'm being transparent, it's not a fire code issue, it's a lot size requirement issue. 6,000 square feet versus 3,500 square feet is a massive difference in the affordability before we even start building on the home. The second part of that is if we put a smaller home on a bigger lot, it's not going to make appraisal because of the land costs. So then we have appraisal issues in the closing process. It just gets extremely cumbersome. So to summarize it all, we have price ranges in Alamogordo for the upper echelon of income earners. We have no new home products for most of the people who work on the base and most of the people who work in Alamogordo. And it's a conscious decision right now on our parts of providing an ability to do that. If I would challenge you guys to go to our homes that are below $220,000 in the 1,200 to 1,600 square foot range and look at what people are paying for, we're trying to provide a product that brings new aesthetics into Alamogordo, and we need the lot size changes to help us do that. If we don't change the lot sizes, to be completely transparent, it changes nothing about my business approach. Nothing changes for me in Alamogordo. I continue to make the same amount of money, I close the same amount of homes, nothing changes for me. The scary part of that is nothing changes for Alamogordo either. And that's what I want you to, to take the honest look at is, what is the risk of denying the changes if we concede to the fire requirements? I, I don't see the risk of doing it, because what I'm showing is, throughout Alamogordo, there's different ranges of size homes, so it's not like everything's going to be built the same exact way throughout all of Alamogordo. But right now, we have no product in Alamogordo that is, is attacking what we continually say is our biggest problem. So imagine an E1, which BAH rate with dependents is $1,200 a month, and we're showing that we think we can come close to providing the base all the way down to an E1 level, the ability to purchase a home. That's something we can't do right now. So with that, I'll stand for any, because I think we got questions this time, right?
I'm working with several people who are looking at affordable housing. So I'm interested in your motivation and your vision. Where does this social consciousness come from? Just give me a little hint of this inspiration.
Yeah, so the inspiration behind it, I think for me, is pretty simple. Home builders tend to get greedy.
I'm going to write that down.
Yeah, I'm being, we, we tend to get greedy. In order for us to be able to consciously attack that problem set, we have to take significantly reduced costs in ours. We can't just lower the price of the home. Our, our margins of profit on these homes are next to nothing. So then it becomes a standard of velocity. I can make revenue through velocity with lower margins. Our build team here for, I don't want to get into some, I'm a number, I'm a numbers nerd. I spit numbers to you all day long. But you asked, what's the inspiration?
Yes.
I spent 10 years in the military, and I fought almost on a monthly battle to watch people make rent payments. I don't know any other way to say that. And when you look at the other day, I make good money, I'm not going to lie about that. When I went to McDonald's the other day, which I don't eat fast food, so I don't frequent it very often, I ordered hamburger with a coworker, and they came back and said that's going to be $8.65. I said, no, I just wanted the hamburger, à la carte. They're like, yeah, that's $8.65. I was like, what kind of nonsense is this? It's, it's to feed a family at something that's supposed to be affordable for a family of four, it's 45, 50 bucks. That's absurd. I can't control that. What I can control is what I provide the opportunity to present that with, with inside of Alamogordo. I had dinner with the Las Cruces mayor a couple weeks ago. Brian, my CO, he kind of asked the same question. And it's, I struggle watching what people pay and what they get, when internally I go, man, we can do that. I'm not going to stop building the higher-end homes, but why would I not offer everything? Our, our purpose in our company is, is to improve our community relationships and improve anything we can within our company. My goal is to have everybody within our company be able to afford one of our homes. I can't do that right now. So how do I consciously build homes that my employees can't afford? And that's the question that I stand at, is, is how, how do I consciously build homes that my employees can't afford?
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'll wait.
Okay. City manager, we're currently in the process of rewriting all of our subdivision and zoning type stuff, if I'm not mistaken, we were working on it. Where are we at on that?
Yes, sir, those are still in progress. I can't give you an exact date when those rewrites will be ready, but the zoning ordinance is being looked at. I want to just expand just a moment to tell you that I've spent a lot of time in development over the years. I've, I've had the opportunity to watch the paradigm shift as we look at development. I grew up in an era where people were spread apart in cities. We didn't want to live close together, so we had big houses on big lots, far apart. But over time, I've, I've understood and watched communities begin to shrink in terms of those densities, where they have more people in a smaller spot, where the buying public wants to buy a home today that, number one, they can afford, number two, they don't want a big yard, they don't want to have to take care of a lot of maintenance, they don't mind sitting in their bathroom and shaking hands with the next-door neighbor through their bathroom. I didn't grow up like that, but I've learned a lot about development, particularly in the Dallas-Fort Worth area where I came from. And so those lots are getting smaller. The cost of those lots, as Kevin just told you, is part of the, the driving force behind what he has to do to margin his homes. And it doesn't matter if it's Kevin or any other, any other builder. So from the city's perspective, when I start looking at zoning and land use, we don't particularly have an issue with those smaller, those smaller lot sizes bringing those setbacks in a little bit closer. As long as, and, and he's already said, we're not, we're not talking about the fire codes at this point. Those, that's a whole, that's a whole different issue. But we don't have a problem bringing those setbacks in to allow you to build more homes closer together, get more homes within a block. So it also gives the builder, again, it doesn't matter if it's Kevin or anybody else, he showed you three or four different styles of homes that he could build size-wise, that do give some flexibility and some opportunities for the buyer. some flexibility and some opportunities for the buying public to come in and buy. I don't mind telling you, I leased a house here. It's a small house, it's just slightly over 1,200 square feet, and it's $1,600 a month. And most of the ones I looked at were $1,800 to $2,100 a month, the houses that I really thought I needed, but I realized I really didn't need. And so he's not lying when he talks about trying to get those costs down. He mentioned some stuff about the infill. Josh, I know you and I have talked some about infill. Those are opportunities. Ms. McDonald, you and I have had this conversation. There are opportunities to take some of these smaller lots that otherwise would not be big enough to build a house on by ordinance, but we can create districts, we can have planned developments where we can regulate specifically the lot sizes in a specific subdivision. We can do those kinds of things to get a real house on a lot, even though a smaller lot, that would give somebody that opportunity to own a house that otherwise may never be able to, whether it's the young airmen from the base or somebody working at Walmart or wherever they're at. It's difficult right now for anybody to find those affordable houses. And anyway, that's my spin on it from the city manager's office. We can certainly work with any developer and, you know, I think as much as anything, part of what we're trying to do is figure out how to make things work in our administration and trying to figure out how to not stop progress and create new opportunities for people. So this is one way that this could happen, as Mr. Jewell has explained to you from his position. But I don't know if I answered your question, you didn't ask me how to-
Build a watch, did you? You asked me what time it was.
Yeah. My reason for that question is, you know, if it's something we're going to have here shortly, then, you know, it can maybe be addressed in the subdivision ordinance, but if it's not, if it's something that's a year out, maybe we look at creating a new zoning, you know, section like an R1A or an R2A or whatever it is. And I know we have planned unit development already in our ordinance-
Yes.
-which, you know, maybe we could somehow structure it like that.
We could do it for Somerset, the PUD. We could do it for Somerset. It's, what I'm trying to be very transparent on is, I could do this from a selfish standpoint where I only care about what I can do. I'm trying to do it from the holistic approach of what's good for the city.
And that's where I was going with that, that R1A, you know, like we got R1, but we could go R1A and include, you know, the three or four different lot sizes that you had mentioned in there. And that way, we have control, you know, you obviously don't want to have a 1,200 square foot house sitting next to a 3,200 square foot house in a-
Yeah, absolutely.
-highly sub-division. So that way, we have control over where they go or how they go.
Yeah, and to speak to that a little bit, one of the things, I don't say this out of arrogance, I say this out of a place of hoping to create trust with you, is this year I've been recognized as one of the top 40 influencers within the construction industry nationally. I travel quite a bit to go speak with people in Atlanta, Chicago, on these type of things. And this is an approach, it's an approach for right now. It doesn't mean 10 years from now, it's the right approach. But for right now, it is what we, it's the only lever left to pull in providing affordable housing. I can't pull much more out of the homes, I guess is what I'm saying, and still provide a product that we're proud to offer. And I want it to be for the whole city, not just for what we want.
It's a difficult situation right now, you know what I mean?
It is.
With labor costs, material costs and everything, so.
Okay.
And I will tell you, we don't have people just knocking on the door, developers knocking the doors down here, trying to figure out where to build and how fast they can get started. So this, again, is an opportunity to get out of the paradigm, get out of the rut, if we've been in a rut. Try to do something positive in Ford. This ties right back into the award that we just got. This talks about how we're trying to make things better for our community as well as for the base and our business community in general. We get people living in these houses, they're going to buy groceries here, they're going to buy gas, they're going to go to school, they're going to pay taxes, add the alarm taxes, GRT, which is going to give us the opportunity to do more things. So rather than do nothing, this is to do something other than say no to everything and lock them doors. That's my spin.
Okay, now I have a question. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the size of these homes. I get the lot, but obviously, I think you said a 3,500 square foot lot?
Mm-hmm.
And what kind of house would you put on that?
So if you paired a 27 and a 35 together-
Right.
-that would become a duplex-style home, so it'd be a zero-property lot line, we'd have to have a firewall in between at certain ratings and all that.
Right.
So then what happens is, is when you shrink the size of that lot, you're taking your lot costs and splitting in half, but you're also taking the two homes that would have the side setbacks in between it and you're combining them together. So you're essentially taking-
Right, because you wouldn't have space in the metal, obviously.
Nope, sir, you're taking 15 feet out of it, so you can still fit 1,200 to 1,400 square foot homes on that small of a lot, because you go to a zero-lot line design. And that's where like the 40 by 100 comes into play. What we would want to do is not have a development of just duplexes. We would mix in consciously, single-family, to, one, keep spacing of vehicles and parking, to a certain, I mean, there's safety measures, I get it. Driving a fire truck down a road with 100 cars in it, it's not ideal. So it wouldn't just be a community of, you know, 60 duplexes, it would have single families mixed in there so that we keep spacing of parking and all that stuff.
And when you say duplex, you mean like a one-story?
Well, to maximize the square footage, we would do a two-story duplex.
Like a townhome style?
A townhome, yep. And the way we've designed it is, it looks like one home, it looks like a three-car garage-
Yeah.
-just has two doors. But the exterior of the home looks like a singular home.
There's some houses similar to that out on Cottonwood, Alby Lowes, and then if you go up on like Nevada and that area-
I was just going to say, we lived in one at one time, yeah.
Yeah, there's some houses that are very similar to what he's talking about.
And it's not-
But they were really small, those were really small.
Yeah, and we have products that we're working on right now, and it is extremely tough, let me tell you. We're working on to get down into like the 500, 600 square foot range for some of those infill lots that the commission talks about, but that's the size of home it would take to replace in some of there. And it's just, it's hard to design something with some flair to it at that square foot size. You just start running out of room real quick.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then, because I know you and I have talked, so I do sort of understand your con- I'm still having a hard time wrapping my mind around buying something like that.
Yep.
And I will say this too, I think the key is, when you say, when you say, this gives people an opportunity to buy a home, it gives them an opportunity to buy a brand-new home.
Yes.
Because there are homes in Alamogordo that are still at a price point that people-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, there's roughly-
So I think the difference is not that they wouldn't be able to buy a home, but they would be able to buy a new home.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I think that that's the difference.
So there's roughly 227 closings per year in that square footage in that price range. The problem when you look at that square footage in that price range is they're 40 years and older, and there's nothing wrong with that. But when you look at the current interest rates, those people bought homes in that area when they were in the high twos, low threes, so we have a resale market problem as well. People aren't offloading those homes because they don't want to give up the interest rates.
Because they might give up the interest rate, now I get that.
Then when you talk about-
Believe me when I tell you I get that.
Yeah, so when you talk about availability of product, the resale market's not there, which is why I say it's not a forever thing, but it is a thing right now that we have to do. And to ask your question about timing on the ordinances, we own most of the land in Alamogordo for home building. We'll be out of land in 2025. So if we don't start doing some of these things to where we can get developing this year, there will be no place to build new homes.
Okay, so that brings me to my next question. So I think, for me, when I look at the market, part of the problem with this affordability issue is really sort of an interest rate issue, right? I mean, I think we can, you know, what you could buy, I mean, when, you know, I don't think interest rates are probably ever going to be as low as they were, they were pretty low. I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But that's not going to change anything for you, right? Because I think that would be a concern for me, is that you want to make them affordable, but let's say interest rates go down in, I don't know, by some Christmas miracle, they go down in a year and a half or something.
I think that's a phenomenal question.
Do you understand what I'm asking you?
100% understand.
Because I'm like, okay, so does that mean that's going to make your, right?
Yeah, so-
Because you'll get more house for the same amount of money, I mean, for the same, well, let me say the same payment, the same-
You are 100% correct. So let me, as best I can, explain this to how I try to explain it to our employees. When you talk interest rate, you're essentially talking buying power. If interest rates go down, you as an individual have more buying power. That means you can afford a larger home.
Right.
Right? So what that means also, conversely to that, as interest rates go down, the people who could not afford that home before can now afford that home. So now, as interest rate lowers, it's not that you wouldn't want to build that home anymore, you're just now accessing people who could not afford it before and the people who can now. So it's, yes, interest rates provide you buying power, but just because they go down doesn't mean the product shift changes. Inflation as well to interest rates is probably one of the largest determiners. That's not going down anytime soon, because when you look at the GDP, people are still buying and our credit scores are still going up. And so inflation hasn't created the withdrawal of spending as what you would think, so why would the economy back off of inflation if the American public is still paying for those prices?
Right.
So inflation is what inflation is right now.
Right, and that's really, that's not, well, I don't really think we're deciding on anything right now, but that's not, I mean, that's a business thing and really doesn't-
Yes.
And so I'm not really asking-
And that's what I risk to manage.
Right, and I'm not asking from that standpoint, I'm just saying, are we going to create a situation where you're just, you know, well, you know, they can afford more, I'm going to up the price, whatever? Like I just, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the right reason. But let me ask you another question, because fire is here, and I know that that was a huge concern, and I know you said put it aside. I can't put that aside, I need to know, number one, how they feel about it, and number two, are we creating any kind of a fire safety issue if we were to, I'm asking you, chief, yeah, if we were to, you know, agree to something like this, if we were to agree to, are we creating a potential hazard? Because I do know that that has been a huge topic.
It's been a touching point, yes.
Yes, yes.
I'll agree with that.
And I'm getting mixed, mixed, I mean, I like what you're saying, but then when I listen to that, I'm like, well, is it a safety issue? So I guess maybe you could answer that for us?
Mayor, mayor pro-term.
And I do need you to come up here, I'm sorry.
We're going to be friends. One way or another, we're going to be friends, we're going to get along.
Mayor, mayor pro-term, commissioners, citizens of Alamogordo. So to answer that question, as long as the life safety code is being met and fire code, there is no issue with that.
Okay.
But those have to be met. You cannot disregard that, you cannot throw away life safety, that has to be enforced.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're, so the duplex part, I don't see an issue with, because how can there be, that's not an issue, right? I mean, we build duplexes all the time, so I don't see an issue with that. So you're saying that if you did a duplex here and then, I don't know, you do a single-family next to it or something, is that what you're saying? That would all still be within that, is it seven-and-a-half feet or whatever it is?
Also, two-story to two-story is seven-and-a-half feet.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, so that's where we would probably have to sit down and say, okay, what if we pair a single-family home next to a two-story right now?
Mm-hmm.
By how the ordinance is and the IFC is, it would be five feet, would be the setback requirement.
Right.
Because it's a single-story.
And we would have all that ironed out before we actually voted on anything, right?
Absolutely. He has to go through the planning process and do all of those things to establish those lot sizes and what the setbacks are.
Okay.
All of that spelled out, signed off on by the commission as well, when those plans are approved down the road.
Okay.
And then the building codes come later, once building starts and those plans are submitted, you're basically out of the loop, we are, for that matter. That's when the inspectors come in and make those observations and inspections and we're checking the streets and all the water and sewer connections and all those things. So it's just a matter of allowing those businesses to condense. And again, fire safety code, we're not talking about anything at risk here, that argument led, we discussed that in the Moisar's.
Okay.
And part of that, Mr. Robinson, if I could, of why, if, I think what I want you to take away from that answer right there with-
Sir, can you please speak into the mic?
What I would want you to see from that discussion is, to what you asked earlier about where's the passion come from? If I let my ego get in the way of not working with the fire department on the setbacks and I say, okay, we're not doing anything, then I'm morally not leading the company in the direction for what we stand by bettering our communities. So I have to put some of those things aside to still accomplish the greater good and work around those things. And I hope you take that away from this, is do I and will I agree to how the code reads? Probably not ever. But if that's on their side, I have to at some point in time go, okay, is this a pride issue that I'm having with this? Or do I have the humility and say, okay, let's figure out how to work around this, because I can still provide an amazing product within these confines? And that's what I'm trying to do right now, is we can provide amazing product within these confines with meeting what the fire chief wants and, that's why there's no seven-and-a-half feet anywhere in there, at all, because we're going to be friends.
Well, Kevin, are you-
Yes, no, go ahead.
I, when we talked, we were just asking, because this was going to be something that, the new lot sizes were going to be something that was going to be throughout the city and not just in one area. And my issue is, is that we are building on the outskirts or in the subdivision, and there's room out there, but we also have room in the inner city. And I just was looking at the commitment that you said to a fourplex project in the inner city. So now we're getting a different product in the inner city than we're getting out in the subdivision. Is that a true statement?
To answer it directly, yes, that's a true statement. However, I'm not the one who designed the fourplex, I've been asked to build it, so I'm not the designer of that or the chooser of that. That is not something that is a French Brothers product. We will build what the buyer has given to us, just like you would on a custom home. So that is at their request, not at our request. So we don't own the land, we didn't buy the land, we won't buy the land. That is what that individual is doing. The reason why we would start in the outskirts is because that's where I own the land.
Right.
And that's just, I'm being as honest as I can, I can build on the inner city, I don't own land in the inner city. And that's where it gets difficult for me, so I can follow people who want to build inside those inner cities. It might be a duplex, it might be a single home, it could be a two-story home, I have no idea, throw a dice down the hall, land's on a five, we're going to build that. But it really comes from what the buyer of that project and what the land size allows me to build.
So it's really not an investment, then? You're just basing it on the need or the want for the person who is-
At this point, that's the only option I would have. Just, I don't own the, I don't own the land, so it's hard for me to do a master-planned community when I don't own the land inside the city.
Well, the only reason why I'm looking at it is because, you know, we are stretching money for, you know, trying to get our streets redone, and now as a subdivision, we're adding more of the, you know, the obligation of the city to something that is outside of the, not the city limits, but it's outside of the scope of what we have in front of us. So I'm looking at the fact that in the inner city, we still have streets, we have all the connections, we have everything that would be needed to continue building.
Mm-hmm.
I said, and not have that additional expense. So, you know, right now, I'm looking at the fact that it is a cost, even though, you know, you're talking about what it's going to cost to build a home out there and you're trying to make everything, I guess, a little bit more feasible and affordable. But when you look at the long run of the city, we have to extend money out to that area also. So that's what I'm looking at, trying to see, you know, building a fourplex project, you know, based on the need, you know, for the person, it still eliminates your obligation or your- It still eliminates your obligation or your commitment to the inner city when we have vacant lots here and, you know, things that could be done cheaper. And, you know, it, it just takes a commitment to get it started. And maybe it could be something where you have more than just two vacant lots. Maybe you could have four and, and start something as an investment in the, in the city. And it's not just, I'm not looking at it just in my district, because the vacant lots do look a, a little odd sometimes when you're looking at them. But I still look at the commitment to the city. And so, now, the obligation is going out to the subdivision, which, you know, is land that you bought, and that is an investment in the community. But I'm still looking at the, the fact that it's gonna cost the city more money once you turn that over to the city, as far as, now, that is the obligation of the city to keep the roads and any of the utilities going. So, I, that's why I'm, I, I really, I'm not against building, but I am looking for things that could happen, because we have to look at all of the, the districts in the city. It's not just, you know, District Six, or District One, or District Two. We have to look at everything, because I think that in District Five, I think the money that has been generated in District Five has helped create the fact that the subdivision could be, you know, developed, because the money, or that money that you're using, it, it came from the District Five, or I'm just using that as an example, to help build something in District Six. And so, sometimes you're looking for some of that to come back into the areas that have helped support the reason and the wherewithal that we could develop in the subdivisions, because that money has been taken from certain areas to produce better homes, and like I said, I'm not against that. I just wanted to see a little bit more commitment to the areas that really need to be built up and populated.
Okay. So, I'll take that and try to break it down a little bit. We actually pay for the development costs for the development. The city doesn't pay anything until it becomes maintenance costs-
Right.
For something happens, right? So-
I understand that.
That's a huge investment on our part. Here, here's where we get into the cart before the horse, or did the egg come first before the chicken? I, I can't make a commitment if the ordinances are the way they are. It's not even feasible. I wouldn't even look for land on the inner city with the way that the ordinances are. It's, so-
That's, that's not a question either. I'm just saying, if we're making everything equal, where it is actually done in all the districts. I said, that is, you know, you can start there. I said, because I, I understand that you're paying for that. But once that is developed, then the cost turns over to the city. It's not the development any longer.
Madam Mayor, on this, can we, this is kinda how I think this should go, because it was a discussion. There's really no action. But we could provide staff direction. And I, I would like to see staff maybe draft a R1A-type zoning, which would encompass what Mr. Jewell is, is talking about. And fire can be involved in it with the setbacks, so we can make sure. Because there's various ways in the building code that if you don't have the 10 feet that you need between structures, you can do firewalls and different things. There's, there's different ways around that. But, and then also have staff look at the infill development, because like Mr. Jewell's stating, down here in your district, Sharon, there's a lot of property. There's a lot of vacant lots, and it would be amazing to go in there and build new homes on those lots. But he doesn't own those, and trying to get those people to sell those to you sometimes is difficult. But if we could have staff look into that infill development program that I had talked about last year, down in that area, maybe figuring out how we can acquire some of those lots, and then, you know, I'm not sure how that would work, but if we could get staff to draft something for us to look at, that's a little more concrete, you know what I mean? And then, we can say yea or nay on passing it. And I, I think we should have the control of where these homes go, but I don't think we should limit it. You know, if, if a developer wants to buy that land and, and subdivide it into this, then, then so be it, allow them to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm basing everything on the new lot size and everything being equal. I'm not asking for anything different. I'm just asking for the, the fact that if we have all things equal, then how will it look and what would the commitment be?
Yeah, and, and I honestly can't give you an answer right now on that. I think it would be misinformation on my part to just try to get you to say yes to something, and I don't want to be that kind of human. There's a lot of things that go into building an inner-city infill lots. One of the largest ones that we're running into, again, one of the reasons why I started a mortgage company is so that we can try to better control the affordability process. When you do inner-city lots, it's, I go to Albuquerque tomorrow for two days to visit on exactly what you're talking about, as how do you do infill developments with inner city? Unfortunately, a lot of times when you do those infill developments, you're, you're building in a market space that cannot qualify for the home product, so you require an investor to buy it, and it becomes a rental space. That, that's just a factor. I can't change that. That's just the way, with interest rates where they're at right now, that demographic in that area has a hard time affording that home from a down payment stance, a credit score stance. But that's where I also come in, as interest rates go down, that's a demographic that would then maybe be able to afford to buy the home. And that's where, being very sensitive to the comments, it's difficult to develop inner-city developments for the purpose of mass quantity purchase, because typically, people in that demographic cannot afford where the home is at right now, but they could afford the rental payment of it. They can't qualify-
Right.
From a credit score side, and I can't control that. So, I, I empathize with what you're going through, and I'm trying to be transparent that that's a problem that goes deeper than what I can solve, because I don't control their finances. I can provide the product, but it doesn't mean that they can, it, uh, running estimates, this is at $150,000. That, that monthly mortgage payment would still be $1,200. That, that's hard for somebody to qualify for when they're on minimum wage in Alamo Gordo, and that's, those are just the facts that I'm working with, and I, like I said, I empathize with you. I want to be a part of solving that problem. But I, I, I definitely do not have the answers to those things without it being a collective we trying to solve those problems.
And I just wanted to add to that. I said, there is a house in the district that they're asking $1,000 a month for, and that's for rent, and they are doing it. So, it's not that people can't afford to pay $1,200. I mean, I'm not saying for them to go outside of their budget, but the houses in that area are being rented for $1,000.
I agree a hundred percent, and I've toured some of those. It's the credit score issue. That's the part I can't control.
I think it's a credit score issue, and I think, you know, obviously, a BA loan, it's, you know, it's a lot easier, right? Because there's no down payment, and so I think that's another issue. But, let's just, if, does anybody have any more questions?
One other one, and, and this is more for Mr. Holden's information. Down there in that area where we're talking about, too, it can be declared an SBA hub zone. I don't know if that would help us in ways of, of making that work with infill. I remember, and I don't remember all the criteria, but down in that area, it, it fit, because we were gonna declare that an SBA hub zone at one time.
We'll, uh, we'll look at some of those options and opportunities, and, and I, and I know that I had visited some with you about infill, and I visited with Sharon about some things. Each one of you, we've talked about some housing, and I knew this was gonna take a little bit longer, but you can't, you can't do this over the phone. There's no way to get this kind of information out to you, and this is a change. This is a different approach to a, to a way that we've looked at probably here for years. And so, that's what he's asking for. And if you give me the direction, Josh, as you just gave me, as a group, we can pursue some of these things and, and reduce these down to something that you can comprehend and work from. Lot sizes is not that big of a deal for us. That's just not a big zoning issue. We can, we can do that.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't affect our ISO ratings and, and all of that stuff. But I, I think you guys have already got most of that handled.
You're seeing, and, and if you travel and look, you'll start seeing these homes all over the country that are on zero lot lines. That's just not even a, a factor much anymore.
We already have some of this in our duplex portion of it. If I'm not, I'm not real, real familiar with the duplex portion, because they don't build a whole lot of those.
I'm very familiar with it.
What's that?
I said, I'm very familiar with it.
It, it, I think we already have some in our ordinance.
And I've seen some of those while I've been driving around looking at things.
It's the total lot size.
Yeah.
So, the, the requirements of the zoning of what you can build is not the issue. I mean, it's, the city's fair on that with the, the fire codes. It's the, it's the minimum size requirement. It's 4,000 square feet minimum, and, and we're asking to go down to 2,700. And that's why I want everybody to understand. I'm not asking to change what we're doing on the building code. I'm simply asking us to look at la tierra, the land. Let's adjust how we do the land so that we can have a shot at providing a more affordable product.
Right. No, and I totally get that. I, I understand what you're saying. I think-
Everybody okay with, you know, having staff draft a-
Can you put that in the form of a motion so we can move on?
We can't do a motion.
Really can't. It's not an action item, but we, we can take this and run with it.
Yeah, it's just, we can provide direction to staff, say, hey, staff, we would like you to look into this-
Yeah.
And draft something up for us, bring it back to us, and then that's when it would be an action item. So, they could, they can draft up the, you know, a variance for the lot sizes, or a, a different zoning, uh, uh, classification, or however they want to do it, and then bring it back to us in, you know, a couple of weeks, or months, or however long they need. So, I think it, city staff could look at different-
Options that are out there and present us with several options.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we all agree we want staff to, is that the direction?
That's our recommendation.
I'd like to look at that and the infill program down there in mostly Sharon's district, and I think Steve's has some, and mine has some areas.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a number of places in town that I've, I've driven through that would probably fit that category. And it's just a matter of creating a zoning district to do that. But then, as he, as Kevin says, you know, once you get into that part of it, then financing and things for folks that build versus their income and, and all of that, we, we can't control that, but we can do the rest.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the other issue is, is, I'm not a realtor, but I dabble in real estate a little bit. And you do have to find, just even to qualify for something like that, you've got to find comps and that kind of thing. And I think those kinds of things might be a little more difficult when you're talking about putting a brand-new house in an area that has much older homes. Although, I will say that there are some homes in your district that I think they're asking, in my opinion, ridiculous amount of money for, but, but I think that's just the way of the market, and, but I do think that that, it just seems to me like if we're, if there's an issue, that's where the issue is gonna lie, is trying to get those comps in that area, which is gonna-
Absolutely.
Cause, cause a problem with qualifying for that amount of a loan, which may be something that, you know, they have to come up with a bigger down payment, or that gap, or whatever it is. So, so I do see that as an issue. But whatever, that's another discussion for another day.
We'll, we'll get started on that. Stephanie's looking forward to that. I already got the thumbs up over there.
I can tell. I can tell she's looking forward to it. Okay. So, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much. Thank you for explaining that so well. I think it's a great concept, and I guess we'll see what we can do. All right. We're gonna move on to item 16. Consider and act upon appointing a member representative and an alternate to the Southeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization Committee. Rachel has some information on that.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And so, they are requesting that a member and an alternate be, be, that you will appoint somebody to these, this board. Currently, Stella Real is the active member, and she has been an active member for years. And the alternate was Commissioner Mountain before that. It was Stella and Commissioner Nadia Sykes, which she was also active in that, in that board. And so, what they do here is, they mainly get together to talk about New Mexico Department of Transportation. Stella did let me know that the next meeting is March 21st, and it is in Artesia, and so they do move around to different cities to meet. And if anybody's interested in knowing a little more, bit more about the board before appointing somebody, Stella's here, and maybe she can help answer questions if you have questions about the board.
Okay. Is that one of our options, is just to reappoint Stella, or is she just automatically, or had?
That is up to the commission.
Okay. So, that's one of the options tonight, is to reappoint Stella and then one of us as an alternate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody want to do that? Are we all okay with reappointing Stella?
Stella, who you want?
I don't want to want. Don't put that up. That's between you all.
Okay. Are we good with that? And how about an alternate?
How many meetings a year is it?
Yeah.
Four?
Isn't it four?
Sometimes it can be a little more than that. We meet sometimes monthly.
Stella, can you come to the podium?
Usually, we meet quarterly. I mean, there's times that it might be a little, you know, the schedule may change a little bit, but it's usually quarterly. Like, our last meeting was January 31st, and now we meet in March again.
Okay. So, I, the other option, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other option is we could appoint Stella and Sean as an alternate? Could we do that? Or does it have to be a commissioner?
I don't believe it does have to be a commissioner.
Yeah, I don't believe it does either.
And it's entirely up to you. I mean, who, unless somebody's interested in being on that, that board. If you are, then speak up.
Doesn't it, doesn't it look better if it's an elected official and a staff member to the board?
I think that, in my personal opinion, I've always liked the fact, I've been, I've been a voting committee member for about 11 years now. So, in my opinion, it always seems better if elected official is the alternate, because of the fact that, you know, you, you bring a little more leverage into-
Okay.
Yeah, you know, and I think it, it works better if it's an official, elected official-
Okay.
To represent the city.
That's fine. I just didn't know. Nobody was speaking up. So, is anybody, are you, are you offering Commissioner Reardon?
Mayor Payne, I, I would do it.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like, where did that come from? Sorry. Sorry about that. I apologize.
I'm the quiet one down here.
I'm getting his nomination.
Okay. So, so Commissioner Tapley? Okay. So, is everybody okay with appointing Stella and Commissioner Tapley as our alternate?
Yes.
Okay, and-
We need a motion on that, don't we?
Yes. I believe we do, yes.
We appoint Stella and Commissioner Tapley.
Okay. And that's on item 16. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner, I'm sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon, a second from Commissioner Robinson. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to item 17. Consider and act upon appointing a board member to the Southeastern New Mexico Economic Development District. Council of Governments and... Rachel?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, here they are asking, again, for a member for this board. This membership is for two years unless that person steps down before that. Now, I do want to point out that for this board, the city does contribute annually and has been for years, $9,121. And as you see, I did attach the resolution, the agreement, as well as the invoice that has been paid already this year. And so, in this board, they talk about major economic interests, such as business development, business retention, community facility planning, economic development, grant assistance, human resources development, land-water management, legislative initiatives, transportation, planning and development. And so, currently, the mayor is the one that is the board member, and she has been for a couple of years. Before that, it was the previous mayor, and so they are asking for another board member.
Are you gonna take it?
So, we, we need an additional board member, or just keep the one we have?
You can keep the one you, if she'd like to.
Aren't you gonna do it?
Sorry, I'm laughing with everyone else. Uh, yeah, I go, yeah, that's fine. I'll go ahead and keep doing it. I, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I, sometimes I'm a little lax on those meetings, but, because sometimes you do have to travel, and that's a little difficult sometimes, but I can go ahead and do it.
How many of them have you made in the last two years?
Two?
Does this one meet once a year? Quarterly?
I believe this one's quarterly also.
Quarterly.
It's a quarterly, so four times a year? I'll make a motion and we nominate you.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second.
I heard you. I'm just kidding. Anyway, a second from Commissioner Tapley. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 18. Consider an act upon ordinance 1686 for first publication to add Article 11-8, um, uh, to Chapter 11 of the Criminal Code concerning peddler and solicitor regulations. And Ashley Smith, our city attorney, has some information on that.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Um, so we're bringing ordinance 1686 for you, um, concerning peddlers and solicitor, uh, regulations. As some of you may recall, we had brought, um, this a few months ago. But we had brought it as an amendment which was incorrect. It should have been brought as a, essentially a new item, or, because we're adding it into Chapter 11. Um, this, this ordinance had previously been under Chapter 17, but when we are redoing that chapter, we had rescinded this ordinance. And now we are trying to bring back this ordinance, um, as a new item under Chapter 11, which would be the criminal code. And do I have, stand for questions?
How does the ordinance read?
It's on your.
It's in your package.
It's, uh, it's fairly long, if you want me to read the whole thing.
Can you summarize? What are we changing?
So, we're not, we're not really changing anything that had been, that had been previously in the ordinances. It's just we're bringing it back under a new chapter. So we had rescinded it because it was under, um, it was previously under business regulations and licenses. And so we were no longer requiring a license for peddlers and solicitors. Um, and we're actually bringing it back under the criminal code, basically, because, um, it deals with, you know, aggressive manner from solicitors. So, you know, if you, if someone is trying to solicit some, you know, something, and you tell them no, you know, uh, and they just really persist and become aggressive, then our officers have a way to, um, you know, combat that, and they can cite them under this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
How, uh, how are we going to enforce that? Like, I had one at the House, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, selling something, and he was very aggressive. Like, wouldn't leave, finally had to be rude to him. I mean, but by the time officers get there, more than likely, they're going to be out of the neighborhood. How are we going to go about enforcing that?
So as far as enforcement goes, I will turn that over to Chief, um, as he would be primarily the enforcer on that. Until it comes to my office, and then we will prosecute, of course.
It was the guy selling, uh, the, uh, uh, what do they call it? It was, uh, like, uh, not a surveillance system, but the, the alarms.
Vivint?
Yeah, Vivint, I think is what it was called.
So the enforcement part of it is, it's a, it's a petty misdemeanor in this case, if it's passed.
Okay.
Um, that is probably not observed by the officer. So it's a report from victim. Uh, if there's enough probable cause, we can issue a citation. Or, I mean, we can go the warrant route if we really want to put him in jail, but generally, it's a non-traffic citation.
Or if you have multiple complaints in one neighborhood about the same person.
It just strengthens the case, more probable cause.
Okay. Some of them guys are pretty aggressive, so.
Also in here is about stepping off into the roadway, um, for soliciting and, and getting money and stepping off into the roadway. So we, we, uh, do run by those cases often, like First Street and things of that nature.
Anybody have any more questions?
No. So this is just going to go to another chapter?
Correct.
Correct. It's being added back into our ordinances, just under a different chapter.
Okay. I'm glad to see it back, just FYI. Okay. If there are no more questions, do I have a motion to approve item 18? So moved. A motion for Mayor Protem McDonald. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 19. Consider an act upon ordinance 1687 for first publication. Um, this is concerning, uh, alcohol, alcoholic beverage regulations. And Ashley, you're up.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, uh, very similar to the ordinance that we just discussed. We had previously brought this, um, to you guys. But again, we had labeled as an amendment, and that was incorrect. Should have been adding it. Um, this was previously under, on the books, under Chapter 5. When we rescinded all of Chapter 5, this ordinance went away. We are now trying to bring it back. But again, we're adding it under Chapter 11, which is the criminal code. Um, and really what this does is it, um, deals a lot with the selling or giving alcoholic liquor to minors. Um, so at the moment, we don't really have anything in municipal that we can cite, um, minors with alcohol under. Uh, bringing this ordinance back will give us something to be able to cite, um, for people giving, I should say, giving alcohol to minors, because we can't actually cite minors into municipal court.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Anybody?
We can't cite it under the magistrate, uh, code, or, is it, I mean, it's illegal to give minors alcohol. But this will just allow us to cite it into our court?
Correct. We could cite it under municipal court, but I know that we've had to go towards the state route when this was taken out. Um, and I'm sure Chief Conahara can talk about that a bit more.
This really, this really hits the 18, 19, and 20-year-olds, um, giving or selling alcohol. Uh, so a 21-year-old giving it to someone who's like 20 or 19. Otherwise, if you're getting, giving it to someone under the age of 18, it's a felony. So this just gives us a petty misdemeanor charge when it's giving alcohol to an adult, but they're under the age of 21. But there's more to the ordinance. There's location regulations, drinking in public. All of that was repealed, or I think that's the term, repealed from Chapter 5. And we're just essentially moving, giving it a new number and moving it into the criminal code. So we can, we can continue, or we can start enforcing it again.
We couldn't enforce it previously?
When it, once it was repealed, the ordinance didn't exist, so we have actually had to send some cases that fall under that, um, to magistrate court for officer prosecution, which is a whole nother animal. But, um, more specifically, if we run into, um, local people who are drinking in public, we can't really do anything about it.
Just so everybody understands, if a case goes to magistrate court, the officer is responsible for prosecuting his own case. So that becomes really problematic, because they're not lawyers.
Mm-hmm.
Although, I don't know, to hear Chief talk, sometimes you think he'd had some, like, law school experience. Anyway, negative. Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 19?
I move that we approve item 19 and put it in the right chapter.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson?
Aye.
Mark Tapley?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 20. Consider an act upon terminating the lease with Downtown Ventures for default on the lease. Just a reminder, we are only talking about their lease today. And Ashley Smith has some information on that.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, um, I am bringing in front of you, you all, uh, the lease agreement that the city has with Downtown Ventures. Um, due to, I'm bringing it before you guys for termination due to default on the lease. I had reached out to Downtown Ventures multiple times. Um, I had sent them several letters. You all should have that, those letters in your packet, which also, um, details all of the violations of this lease. Um, terminating this lease will help us to move on to the next step. It does not, you know, it doesn't take away any of the financial obligations that Downtown Venture has with the city. Um, you know, there's still things that need to be addressed, but we'll be able to move forward, um, you know, as quickly as we can. Obviously, this is going to be an ongoing issue. But this is just like, pretty much the first, one of the first steps, um, to get some of the stuff resolved. Do you have?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, Commissioner Paul.
Uh, city attorney had mentioned there was other letters that were supposed to be included in the packet. The only letter that I see in there was a letter from Mr. Chun in response to whatever the city had sent. There was no other info in the packet relating to anything that we've submitted over to him. I don't know if that, city clerk, if that made it or didn't make it in?
Uh, no, that's the only letter that was put on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, that's.
Somehow those must have gotten taken off, because I had, um, all of the communications that I've had, uh, with the letters. But I can.
What, uh, what specifically are they in default of?
Okay.
I mean, I know several of them.
Yep.
Items after reading through the lease agreement.
Yeah, so, um, and I guess just for y'all, or for everyone's knowledge. So I had sent, the very first letter I sent to Downtown Ventures was in December, December 6th. Uh, pursuant to the lease, we have to give them a notice of default. This is act, this was acting as a notice of default. And pursuant to that, they had 30 days to correct the default. As you guys can see, you know, we are well past the 30 days, um, because we were trying to work with Downtown Ventures to get some of this stuff resolved. But some of the, um, so, some of the defaults consist of, so in sections 14 of the lease, it deals with maintenance and operations. Um, it says, uh, tenant fails to pay any lease amount as and when such lease amount becomes due. So, in January of 2022, it, the bills had been quarterly. We changed it to monthly pursuant to Downtown Ventures requests. Um, they stopped making monthly payments November of 2022. We, the city sent invoices in December 2022, January, February, March, April, and May of 2023. Um, the city did not receive a rental payment until July 10 of 2023, and that payment was for $2,000. Uh, at that time, there was a balance of $16,000 that was owed. We have not received a payment since that time. At the time of the letter, there was a balance of $32,000 that is now up to, I believe, $38,000, um, as I had informed you, um, Commission earlier on. Another section, uh, that was violated or is in default was, is Section 1511. Um, it's the right to terminate, um, well, I should say, due to the default, we actually, we actually did Section, uh, 1511, which is our right to terminate defendants, our tenant's right to possession of the facility. Section 1413, um, was a default. So basic, tenant, and what it says is tenant fails to perform or breaches any agreement or covenant of this lease not separate cover, separately covered in this paragraph 14 to be performed or observed by tenant. Uh, in the lease, Section 532 requires, required the tenant to furnish the city with a semi-annual P and L statement and balance sheet certified as correct by an authorized member or tenant, officer of tenant. Um, this report was due 45 days after the end of each reporting period during the term. Um, the city had never received any of P and L statements. Um, we still have not received any P and L statements. Um, nor did we ever receive an annual financial report, which was due within 90 days. And so those are also things that were in default and classified as a qualifying default event under the lease.
That's fine. You don't have to, I just saw the email that you had sent. I didn't mean, mean to make you go through all of them.
Uh, it's, it's okay.
That they've been in default of. So with regards to this lease, from the city's perspective, they haven't been providing us a lot of the financial documents for the entire time of the lease, or just in recent times, say, for the last three years.
So my understanding is the P and L statements we have never received. Um, which is, which was an issue because that determined, um, the lease amount.
Right.
But the big thing, um, is, of course, the non-payment of the lease agreement.
Right.
Which has been since COVID, right?
Since, well, we got a payment, when did I say we had a payment? We have received a payment.
July 10th, I think you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, received a rental, you know, um, July 10 of 2023, we did receive a rental payment. But again, that wasn't for the entire amount that was owed. It was only for the 2,000. Um, but there was still a balance.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my concern is, is this is going to shake out however it does, court or otherwise, whether he comes to the table. Another question I had was, is mediation option an option that you guys have presented to him? But one comment I would like to make is, and I think that hopefully city manager will have a better handle on these types of contracts. Should we be in the business of, uh, having business ventures like this? Because I think it's pretty sad, from the city of Alamogordo's standpoint, that we're not maintaining lease agreements and ensuring that we're getting what is owed to us, number one, whether that's monetarily or by documentation that should be submitted. I mean, the fact that we probably have no records on anything that was really submitted to this, and we're not trying to push Downtown Ventures to produce those items is, you know, just oversight on the city's behalf, where maybe something could have been, you know, preventing this from coming to what it did, and just somebody shutting the doors and closing down a facility that the community really enjoyed using. So I would ask and hope that we can better manage those. I know that you weren't around when all this happened, but.
Well, I certainly can't explain why those things didn't happen, but I can assure you from my standpoint, that going forward with whatever, uh, decisions the commission makes in this regard, and whatever agreements we might arrive at, we will follow up on those, and you will become known in a timely manner of default situations, such that maybe we can head off something like this before it gets there again. Uh, I've heard a multitude of stories about this project. Uh, as you can imagine, being the new city manager in town, uh, I've heard all kinds of stories about it, and some of which you, you all have told me. So, um, I will take that to heart, Mr. Paul, and we will be sure that we follow those guidelines.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
It's my understanding that he, he actually was, well, he never provided P and Ls, which obviously he should have. But in terms of the lease, it was, it was all good until he was shut down. And that doesn't negate anything, because that's not our issue, that's not our problem, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, where my issue comes is that there still needs to be communication between both parties.
Well, and I agree with that. And I will say that, yeah, I will say that, um, I, I don't want to say hounded, but I asked very strongly a few times our former city manager about where we were at with that, because I was concerned, obviously, um, like everybody else, and, and, you know, going out there and seeing what was going on. And so I did, I was pretty intent that I wanted to know, like, what was going on with this. And it was just one of those things that, for whatever reason, um, I don't know, for whatever reason, it did not get addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's.
And it is frustra, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I agree with you. I, it's very frustrating and, um, and.
I think it was just, you know, it's.
Disappointing, I think. Yeah.
Absolutely. You know, it hurts the community more than anything else.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I did just want to say too, um, while it's not a default event, the shutting down was a violation of the lease agreement. It is actually in our lease, the proper way for this lease to have been terminated by the tenant. Um, it had, it should have been in writing. He would have had to stay open for six months.
Oh, you mean posting it on social media was not a proper way to tell everybody that he was closing his door? Come on, I thought that's what we did.
That is a proper form yet.
Jeez, man, I thought that was like totally legal. Geez, man, I thought that was like totally legal and.
I did have one final question, if I may. Relating, if it does relate to the lease, who owns the equipment in there? If that's something that's.
So, the equipment's not part of the lease agreement. That is part of the LEEDA agreement.
Okay.
Which, as I have mentioned before, we will discuss later, that, that agreement will be coming before Commission at a later date, once the LEEDA audit is done. And that is, that's, that stuff is covered under the LEEDA agreement.
To expand on that, like, the lanes and all of the actual bowling equipment was part of the lease agreement because it was part of the original $6 million? Like, the tables, chairs, that kind of stuff, cash register, the POS system, I think that was part of the LEEDA agreement. But the lanes and then the arcade equipment, I think, was part of the LEEDA part of it.
It was part of the.
But the lanes and all of that stuff was included in the original build of the project before Mr. Chun was even involved in it, so.
So, would that even include the, and I don't know, we could get off into this.
The laser tag, I think, was included in it and then the lanes. But all the other stuff, you know, the POS, the tables, chairs at the bar.
Yeah, that was not part of.
That was all in the LEEDA part of it.
So, that stuff that you guys are mentioning is, is in the lease when it comes to repairs and maintenance. It, again, it doesn't address, like, ownership or anything because the LEEDA addresses that. But it, and that's another, an issue with the place and, you know, I had sent an email informing Commission about that. So, one of the letters that I had sent that I thought was with, that you guys got, but apparently didn't, if you, if you all want those letters, I'm more than happy to email them to you all. But one of them was dealing with the maintenance issue. And I know that Mr. Chun's letter does talk about it. But obviously, that is another issue is there were some things that doesn't appear to have been maintained pursuant to the lease agreement. And so, that is, that is essentially another violation of this lease agreement. It's not a default event, but it is another violation that should this go to litigation would be another thing that would be brought up.
If, if there's not a speedy resolve to this and it does end up going to litigation, does that tie up the city's ability to find a new person to take over, you know, leasing, running, operating this or doing whatever the Commission decides?
The thing that's held up on that would, is the LEEDA. It's not really the lease agreement. Once this lease agreement is terminated, you know, we could, there's nothing stopping us except for the LEEDA stuff. And so, we have to have the LEEDA stuff resolved next. Under the lease agreement, Downtown Ventures is still liable to the city, even after termination, to the city for rent, we'll say, until where you're able to fill it.
To fill it.
So, terminating this lease doesn't affect that.
How come the LEEDA is a separate agreement? How come once we terminate this lease, lease agreement, we couldn't go ahead and do an RFP or, or whatever the Commission decides? Because it's a whole separate deal. That was an agreement between Mr. Chun and us.
Because the LEEDA deals with ownership, essentially.
Yeah.
And so, we can't go forward with, until we have that audit to, to, you know, for all that kind of stuff.
Ownership.
Yep.
And recall, we still have a significant financial obligation on that building in, in the debt side that we have to deal with. And, and until we actually settle the LEEDA portion.
So, we don't know the actual amount.
There's still an actual amount of that LEEDA added to the debt that we owe that makes it difficult to be able to move forward today because we've got to resolve that LEEDA issue to determine whether or not it's actually going to be reduced any, by the, by the numbers that they presented to us.
There's a very similar situation, I think, actually twice with, it was Sunbaked Biscuits that had a LEEDA agreement, and then it went to Marietta, and then it went to whatever it is was prior to the marijuana, I don't remember what it was called, I think it was called Sunbaked. So, it was one of those three, but, and it, I'm not sure how staff handled it at the time, but that LEEDA, the, the new owners just assumed that portion of it when they bought into the, to the cookie factory out there, so.
Once we, once we determine what physically is ours in there, by way of the equipment, and we get that LEEDA portion figured out, you're right, we may be able to move sooner than, than not. And this, this issue on this lease may end up in further litigation or whatever, but we might be able to move forward because we'll know what numbers are. There still could be some question about, that's not resolved, except in litigation or mediation or whatever comes about, about, about the, the arcade stuff and, and the bowling balls and, and everything else. I mean, there's a lot of things involved in there.
If I remember right, all of the bowling balls and all of the machines and all of that was there prior to Mr. Chun.
Now, and hopefully, we can get that information and know exactly what we've got.
I might even have some photographs of it before he was.
It might help. We might need that if you've got them.
And I will say, you know, we will obviously discuss a lot more of that when we do talk about the LEEDA stuff because the LEEDA agreement discusses all about what we have financial stakes in.
Yes.
You know, it does detail that things that may, we, that maybe the city didn't, or that was purchased through LEEDA funds, you know, we have a financial stake in. And so, that's one of the issues that we're trying to get resolved. And we won't be able to do that until the LEEDA audit is complete. And then we will bring it before you all to discuss those things. So, a lot of those questions will be addressed when we discuss the LEEDA agreement.
Anybody else had any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'll just make a motion to terminate the lease agreement with Downtown Venture Court.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ridden. Do I have a second?
One second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. That's not a roll call vote? No? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I will move on to item 21, Appointments to Boards and Committees. It looks like the Alamogordo Disability Council, that's our newest one, if I remember correctly. We have four vacancies on that board. We do have three applications. The first one is Lorraine Adams. And if Ms. Adams is appointed, this would be her second term. Her first was from 2014 to 2016. If nobody has any objections, I'm going to appoint her to that board. Okay? The second one is Gregory Mansell, Mansell, I hope I'm saying that right. If appointed, this would be his first term, and if nobody has any objections, I will go ahead and appoint him. Okay? And the last one is Gary Bond. And if appointed, this would be his first term. If nobody has any objections, I will appoint him. All right. We do have two current vacancies on the airport zoning board with no application. So, if anybody out there is watching and is interested in any of our boards, I think they're all on our website. You can take a look at that. And then we're going to move on to unfinished business, item 22. I know you've been waiting. Consider and act upon case SP 20230007. Property owner Bobby J. Joe Stone is requesting to be granted a special permit to allow her niece to reside in an RV on her property at 1,000 Coast Avenue. Hi there.
Hi, do you want her to speak before I present? Since she signed up for public comment?
Yes, that's what I was going to do, if you don't mind.
No, that's.
I do have you signed up. You, three minutes? Yep, you will get three minutes to speak on that. And then.
Madam Mayor, actually, since she's under this item, she doesn't have that three-minute requirement. This is, she's the property owner.
Okay. Well, in that case, you don't have that requirement. But when you're done, we will hear from Stella Rayal.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, my niece has a RV parked behind our trailer on our property. They're trying to get it renovated so they can live in it. Right now, they are, have power on our pole. They have water going through our water hose on our line, and they have a compost toilet. So, they're renovating it so they can live in it. Temporarily, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I mean, I guess it's pretty much, it's going to be the same questions. If you've gotten any of the other things resolved that we talked about before, like the electrical and.
It's on our post.
So, you have now 30 amp?
Yes.
Power supply and all?
But the sewer, what about?
She's got a composting toilet, so she doesn't need sewer.
You're talking a foreign language to me, but okay.
There's, there's no sewer hooked up for that, for a composting toilet.
Okay. Do you want to come up? Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to add or?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, City Manager Holden. Yes, this item was brought to, brought in front of you back October 12th of '23 by my assistant planner. At that time, the item was tabled by votus 620 with direction from the Commission that staff bring back this item to this evening's regular scheduled meeting. Property owner was given the direction to, by Commission, to stay in communication with the Planning and Zoning Department during the renovation process of the RV. As of today, I've never seen the property owners in my department. Last time I saw the property owners in my department was on October 12th, when they actually came and submitted their application for the special permit. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to go through a slideshow and just bring you up to date on the circumstances at that location. So, here, I'm just going to remind you of the area where that little green oval is. That's actually where the RV is located. I want to also bring to your attention, I submitted a copy of the, the plat in my agenda item to you, to, in, to show you that that RV is actually sitting on a 60-foot gas easement that runs through the property. That gas easement actually runs all the way from Walker to Wright Avenue. That's just the protest area that, you know, we sent out letters back in October. That's the subdivision plat. I'm sorry, it's, it's not very nice, but when you're working on a slide like that, you can't get them very big, but it shows that 60-foot gas line easement running through there. So, these pictures were taken on February 6th, which was Tuesday of last week. I went out there about 10:30 a.m. just to look and make sure that, whether they were in compliance or not, because I had to submit everything and meet my deadline for you all by noon that day. So, can't get on the property, so this is as close as I could get to take some pictures. You do see electrical going into an outlet there on the pole. The RV's still in the same spot. I don't know what that hose is. I'm thinking it's going to the sewer, but, like I said, can't get on the property, to be exact. I can tell you that if, if you can see the right to, on the picture on the right-hand side, to the right of the RV, there's like a, a piece of hardy, hardyback. So, it's covering everything, whether it's going to the sewer, whether, I don't know what's back there. Whoops, I don't know what's going out there. So, that's just the information I just went through with you. Rachel, can I have those photos that I sent you this afternoon, please? I went out there again yesterday, just to look at, once again. I don't know what this hose is, but in prior pictures, there was actually a window there. Now, there's a hose. I don't know what it is. It actually looks like one of those hoses you use to drain a swimming pool. But, to be honest with you, I don't know where it's leading, what it's doing, but it's there. This one, now we've got some sort of structure being added to the RV.
Is that where the door is?
I'm sorry?
Is that where the door is?
I don't know. I think the door is to the left of that.
It's on the other side.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know. I mean, the property owner could answer that question. But at this point, staff is still recommending denial of allowing this RV to be there. It does not meet the criteria. Back in, back when this was brought in front of you, as you all are well aware, in order to get a special permit for RVs, you have to meet a hardship. The property owner has to meet a hardship, show proof of a hardship. In this case, the property owner does not have the hardship. The niece has a hardship. So, that's one of the things that I want to point out. Per ordinance 25-01-020, it says, "The applicant must show some hardship which is not self-inflicted but which arises from the character of the property for which the permit is sought. Character of surrounding properties or extreme and unusual personal circumstances. And the temporary placement of a mobile housing unit or RV is not detrimental to the surrounding properties." Like I stated before, this is not hardship on the property owners. This is just them bringing a family member who live on their property. So, at this time, I'm open for questions.
And where the hose is, obviously, that's a drain hose for, that's, that has nothing to do with composting toilets? And we can't tell where that's going to?
I cannot because they put that, that hardyback, it looks like hardyback anyway, whatever that board is, they've placed that in front where you can't see it from the street. So, I can't.
And as far as the extension cords, obviously, that's not a 30-amp cord either.
No, that looks like it's just.
We don't know what that.
Plugged into the outlet on the pole.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd make a motion to abide by staff's recommendation to deny the special permit.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett, and this is to. Yes, deny the special permit. That does not require a roll call vote, huh? I guess not. Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just a regular one.
Yeah, it's just one ten.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 23, to adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-15-1 as amended to discuss real property land, is that word correct, accusation? Or is that supposed to be acquisition?
Acquisition.
What is it? Is that supposed to be acquisition?
Acquisition.
Okay.
I think it's acquisition.
Okay. I, I thought so, but, okay. To discuss real property land acquisition of Mountain Park Farm located in Hyrolls, New Mexico, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett, a second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson.
Aye.
Mark Tapley.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye, and motion passes seven zero, and we are adjourned.